The next up is Nicole Timberman. She has a presentation called "Let's Redevelop This." For those who were not in attendance at the work session, Ms. Timberman did such an excellent job, we were... She ran out of time, we didn't let her finish, so she's coming back this evening to discuss this with us. Ms. Timberman, the floor is yours.
I brought my seventy-three cents project with me again. I'm sorry. Oh, look, you're so fancy. I have a fancier one tonight. Am I allowed to talk? I wasn't sure. I have two things that I printed out for those of you who weren't here at the last town council workshop last week. I just wrote something up real quick called "Let's Redevelop This." Vicky was nice enough to print up some copies that she has up here. I will pass these. This is one that I'm going to reference tonight. This is the one that I had last week. If you guys just want to look over it, well, I'm going over a few things. If anybody's interested, if not, just pass it to the person next to you. I'm actually very excited after getting up here and speaking last week that I'm not the only voice. A lot of people in town feel the same way I do about the redevelopment plan, the riverfront redevelopment plan. We are not against it, we just would like to see it go in a different direction. The Town of Phillipsburg website describes Phillipsburg as a beautiful setting of rolling hills, woodlands, and flowing waters where you can escape from the crowded impersonal developments and find the joys of living in a close-knit community of families and friends as you enjoy all the advantages of urban living as well as a rural atmosphere. It is a place where the beauty, culture, tourism, and recreational activities are enhanced with a growing base of small and mid-sized businesses. Keywords: "small" and "mid-sized businesses." I don't see, and I read, I read the original redevelopment plan and I read the amended redevelopment plan. I don't see anywhere in this where it's small businesses, mid-sized businesses. These are all large-scale, three, four, some of them are even five-story buildings. That's not what your Town of Phillipsburg website is saying. Just a few things that I just wanted to look over here. I also noticed in the proposed Riverfront Redevelopment Phillipsburg Highlands, it ends before 97% of the businesses on South Main Street. You're ending before the train. You're ending before those restaurants and those smaller businesses. Why are we not redeveloping any of that? Some of the buildings, I, someone took these pictures for me. I have an anonymous accomplice. I don't have all the time to drive around and take these pictures. I'm very grateful. These are all the empty storefronts that go from the moment you cross over the Delaware River all the way up until you're welcome to Phillipsburg with the Agway Building. Just a few staggering statistics that I was very upset to read because I live in a bubble. I live in Delaware Heights. I work, I work, travel, play, shop, 2.5 miles from my house. I don't go downtown. I don't go downtown for anything. So I don't realize the town that I grew up in, the town that my family grew up in, has become what it has become. With a population of just under 15,000 people, your household median income is just under $45,000. Your per capita income is just under $25,000. That means each person in the household contributing is making around $25,000 a year with an average household size of 3.1. And just to put this into perspective, New Jersey, the rest of the state of New Jersey versus Phillipsburg as itself. The average median household for Phillipsburg, like I stated, was just under $55,000. The average median household income for the state of New Jersey is around $76,000. The average house value in Phillipsburg is just under $140,000 a year. The average home value in the state of New Jersey, now this is a median, so they're taking the larger, they're taking the smaller, and they're picking the number in the middle, is $328,000. That's triple what we have to offer here. And Phillipsburg, Phillipsburg is surviving on a staggering 29.3% people living below poverty level as the state of New Jersey is 13.9%. How do we fix that? You'd redevelop your downtown. You make these buildings somewhere where people want to go. I, just balling around, came up with some ideas that I thought would draw people in, it would draw in tourism, but it wouldn't shun the people of the town here. The people who live in this town, the people who work in this town can still have something that appeals to them. So just imagine with me, as you cross the building, as you cross the river, the building that's right in front of you, the brick building with the beautiful teal, a speakeasy on the lower level with a murder mystery-style restaurant up above. Now, I don't know if anybody's familiar with what a speakeasy is, but it's really, it's an up-and-coming thing. They have one in Bethlehem. So you walk in, and I think the architecture of this building really is, it just, that's just what it says to me. That's just what it says to me. It says, "I'm haunted. I'm cool. Come in and look at me." So a speakeasy would look like a bookstore in the front, and then it's a bar on just the other side. The other buildings to the right, as you're driving up South Main Street, you want to bring in big-box retailers? Fine, your Phillipsburg mall is dying. It's dying. Relocate some of those downtown here. Put them in that storefront. That's gonna, you want to draw the people across? That's gonna draw people. I'm at the farmer's market on a Sunday, and I just got an email saying, "Victoria's Secret is running a special." Hey, let's hop over to Phillipsburg and stop at the Victoria's Secret on our way home from the farmer's market. Put Victoria's Secret in one of those buildings. Put the Hallmark Store, Kay Jewelers, things that have been in the mall since the mall opened, and they've been able to survive in this area and in this market. My favorite building, one of my favorite buildings downtown. The One Stop Career Center. Your main building has 24,000 square feet. A hotel. An average hotel is 48,000 square feet. This building is just half that size. Running 115 rooms with an average square footage of 325 square feet per room. So with a building of 24,000 square feet, which is half the size of a regular hotel, you just lessen it to the amount of rooms. That's still more hotel rooms than we already have. Some other things that I have an idea for would be an open-style market, the Riverview Art Center having a homebrew-style business. We will offer classes, tastings, and the overall education process of the new interest in home brewery. An art center in the bank on the left. A community art center where you can showcase your local arts, paintingships, a youth art program, art themes that tie into the train, and an adult senior citizen art therapy program. Now, here's another thing. I know a little bit about this. I've done direct sales. In your storefronts, offer direct sale pop-ups. You have direct sale vendors and like vendor fairs who are paying $800 a table for a weekend in a mall, in Monmouth, in Menlo Park Mall, in those types of things. So offer them a storefront where they can showcase and sell their direct sale things for $1,600 a month. You're already making more rent than what you're making with an empty building, and you're selling it to them because they're making, they're paying less money than they would to be in one of those, in one of the malls. Direct sale, person-to-person selling is 63.5% of the business model in direct sales. An average 74% Americans have purchased goods and services through direct sales. The United States is the top-producing country in direct sales revenue at $29.8 billion. And just a few of your direct sale companies, if anybody does any kind of shopping, I know I like to, Lululemon, Pampered Chef, Sensi, 31, Perfectly Posh. Every woman loves jewelry, things that smell good, clothes, and things that are gonna make us look prettier. I would go down there and shop. Fly fishing shop possibly? A recent study by the American Sporting Association discovered that recreational fishing is an economical powerhouse. More than 46 million licensed anglers generate over $40 billion in retail sales with $115 billion impact on the nation's economy. The Delaware River and the Lopaccon Creek provide optimal selling opportunities for supplies, fishing, guided tours, and the education of the overall fishing experience. Now, why do I say fly fishing versus a bait shop? Fly fishing is on the higher end of things. So it's just gonna be a little bit more expensive and bring in a different revenue of people. A train depot. The building right there by where you would get on the train in that apex of South Main Street and Market Street. A fast and kid-friendly food option. Now, imagine would you, you're, where would you stop? A truck stop if you're traveling on the parkway, on the turnpike? I would stop at a very well-witted truck stop. I know it's gonna be a clean bathroom, somewhere where I can go with my kids, somewhere where I can get a quick bite to eat and get back on the road. The train people, that's what they want. They want a quick bite to eat, a clean bathroom, and somewhere where they can go to get on the train. I'm not exactly sure why we don't have a train and trolley museum either. Now, where I'm going with all of this and how I see all of this being able to be pulled together is with the train, the train enterprise. The train enterprise, the possibilities are endless. Where local businesses can adjust their themes to coincide with the train. You have the Great Pumpkin Train, you have the Line Train, you have a 23rd Historical House Tour that is a one-day event that's gonna run on October 20th. Why, as the town of Phillipsburg, are we not partnering with that historical train and running something in Phillipsburg itself? Phillipsburg could run a Historical House Tour alongside this one-day event. Education-rich experience geared towards adults with a possible ghost tour and a psychic medium event. You could set up your festival in Chappelle Park with local vineyards and food vendors. The Polar Express. Turn South Main Street into the North Pole. Turn South Main Street into the North Pole. Put outside speakers that play Christmas music the whole time. It runs from November 23rd to December 16th, running only on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. You could also tie in other things with this, your local arts groups. You could do a paintingship that's themed around the North Pole. You can do tree ornament decorations that's themed around Christmas time. Plus, you're bringing, you could bring in more vendors because people could have one-stop Christmas shopping. They get on that train, they're traveling from all over the tri-state area. I've parked cars down there. They're traveling from Connecticut, from New York, from Delaware, from Philadelphia. They're coming here to ride this train. Why are we not capitalizing on that? Why are we not continuing, keeping those people here? Give them somewhere to stay in a hotel. Give them somewhere to eat. Give them somewhere to shop. Give them somewhere to take their kids where they feel safe. I don't feel safe, and I grew up here. These buildings are worn down, they're dilapidated. The grass is growing through the sidewalks. The stoops are falling apart. The windows are just, it's sad, it's depressed. And I think as long as you continue to let this look like this, you can redevelop this all you want. It's not gonna work.
Exactly.
Does anybody have any questions? I think I was prepared for questions.
Council, do you have any questions?
I was really prepared for questions.
Ms. Timberman, I'd like to know why you're not on the planning board. That's what I'd like to know.
They did ask me to come for next year.
I think...
I don't know. I had a bunch of people.
I think you would be an invaluable asset to the planning board. I also think you're an invaluable asset to the town of Phillipsburg, and this is by far an excellent plan.
Thank you.
Very, very well.
Can I join in?
Yes, please.
Can I say?
Yes, thanks. I want to do a little history lesson here. As much as I know, I'm gonna go back to... No, thanks, thanks, thanks. Take this back to 2005. That's when the original redevelopment plan was done. Planner at that time was Carol and Nathan. We worked for the same company, Short and Palmer, back then. So what happens when you do, Jamie can jump in on this, but when you do a redevelopment area, you have to first define what that redevelopment area is. There's a process you go through. It's called, the term is called "area needed redevelopment study." And it's defined by the use of the site, whether it's lighted, what the crime is. And the town went through that, and with that, they defined what the areas are. So the area that you're most focused on being Union Square and then up toward Market Street, that's kind of where it ended because that's where the defined area was. You were getting into Lawyer's Row at that point. It wasn't anything at all lighted about that. We liked that. So that was a plan that was in place. And there was a re-developer at the time. I think he was dismissed instead. And that's the plan that we had. And it sat there. It spiraled bound, it goes up on the shelf, and not a lot gets done. So other things happened in the town, like the Ingersoll property. The administration back then, we had to concentrate on that. That was, that was an all-out work. It's something going over there, and it is now. And then start to focus, what can we do for the downtown? So Carol and Nathan left my company, hired another planner named Dave. And at that time, the Highlands came along. And the Highlands offered, offered planning money back to towns. If you bought into Highlands in a way, they would, they would give you funding back. So they supplied quite a bit of planning money back to town. So, hey, Dave, what can we do to try and spark the downtown a little bit? So we took that original plan from 2005, and we modified it some. There were some different languages that went in and went through, the planning work heard that, and it went back up on the shelf. Nothing really happened with that. Dave left, 2016. I had the opportunity to hire Angela Knowles, the under-planner. You meet her yet? Okay, you two are gonna be best friends. So she comes back down. I said, "What can we do to spark some interest in this whole downtown now?" I mean, Ingersoll Ranch was on a path to where it is now, a club that's scheduled with everybody. What can we do to spark that downtown? And the new administration came in. You said we gotta do something with the downtown, so, you know, things are starting to align in that regard. Angela went back to Highlands, reapprreciated some money, and said, "Okay, concentrate on some more planning work for the downtown." So March of 2016, they held me out. We had this design charrette.
Yep, that Union Station, Full House.
Yeah, it did in the old train station. But we were able to bring planners in from around the state, actually, from the Blaustein School, professors at the Town Street School. These are noted people. And there's some planners that go around, just for sport, they go around and carry their little thing with their marking pens, and they kind of do this, and they have fun drawing these things up. And all these sketches that you see in the plan, those people did that. They just did that on the bottom of your time because they had so much interest. They had so much interest in Phillipsburg. So that plan got modified a little bit more with some more detail for the riverfront because these are all, you'd be a great realtor and marketer. They got an idea what can go here, what can go here, but nobody's gonna invest in that town unless they see the walking wilds on the street. Like, what are you gonna do to bring people in here? So we have a tremendous asset with that riverfront. Towns are starting to discover that now. The riverfronts used to be a place of building sewage. It used to be industrial fronts, and that's how this town kind of grew up. But it isn't now. It's a recreational asset that we're unique on the Delaware River to have that riverfront right now. So that's where this, these revisions concentrated on, on what to do. But they're not really revisions, okay? The 2013 plan exists, and Councilwoman Deidre Raulmelt picked that up at the planning board meeting. Like, nothing as far as the districts or anything changed. We took Sub-District Two and broke it down, we took District Two and broke it down into some sub-districts. We, from the design charrette, we showed the developer what he could do with respect to what the flooding was there. We had an elevated area with a walkway that actually ties into what this building is, and carries that around. So that's there. So I actually put a little list together of what the differences are between the 2013 plan and what this is. If you just bear with me for a few minutes while I'm on a roll here. It really concentrates in Sub-District Two. The intros changed to reflect the work that the charrette did in more detail. Figure Three is new because we changed the sub-districts based on the charrette. All the design tables are the same, tables that show what the density is, what the permitted uses are. That'll change. It's the same as it was in 2013, it's the same as it was in 2005. You can put a hotel down, you can put a five-story hotel down there. That hasn't changed. But how do I build a five-story hotel with flood area? Well, I give you a cross-section now to show you how you're going, you're going to do that. Goals and objectives were changed somewhat in the 2017. Expanded some language to reflect what the new sub-districts are. We showed the cross-sections. Both standards are the same. Design guidelines, we added some more language into it. But design guidelines are in there, but they're also gonna tie into what the historic commission's going to do. I don't know how far the historic commission is now, but they're starting to put some design guidelines together that we're going to need. And what that does, it doesn't mandate what you do with your building, you keep your building, what use it is, but it's going to say something about what the storefront's supposed to look like. You haven't heard my story, but I'll tell you this. Back in the mid-2005 to 2010, I was in one of these myself. This one. In fact, that's the, that's a monogram of my old company. It's like a ghost ship to me. I hate looking at that either, but I was in there.
It's still there?
No, it's still there. So, you know, we looked to see what would happen. And actually, I did that because when we were closing another office, I wanted to stay in Phillipsburg. I actually asked Mayor Wyatt where we should be, and he wanted me to be down there just to spark some interest, some interest in the downtown. So, but anyway, I was working here. I was working here one night later, I looked out, and there's like flashing pink light. I didn't know what it was till I went up, he did, in my car. And there was a neon sign in the store above this that said, "Bad debt, we can help. Bad debt, we can help." And I went back to the guy and said, "You can't do that. It's gotta come down." He said, "Well, the UEC gave me the money to put it there." So there was always this disconnect as to what could happen down there. So we put the guidelines in. So the bottom line, we came in with this revised plan in 2016. We've been talking about it since, but it sure did spark the interest. I haven't had, heard this much talk about redevelopment plan, and you're fantastic what you're trying to do. But I think you still have to do what you can do to get the major developer down there to do something. And a developer's, a developer's gonna be attracted to a town when, A, you've got a unified governing body that can agree. I don't get opinions, I can't do that. But we gotta get that together as to what we want to do and go forward. And I don't think anybody's disagreeing what has to be done there. A developer, and this is for a conversation I had with the council president, a developer wants, and nobody's up against, too. And there are some challenges down there as far as infrastructure is concerned. Just off the top of my head, I can tell you, there's the Riverside Drive pump station. That's, needs an investment right now because that's in very, that's in very poor shape. You can't even open the door. But that has to be redone. I think we're gonna put some minor repairs. But developers are gonna have to readdress that, so we should give some thought as to where that's going to go. There's going to be some traffic challenges down there. There may be some improvements that are required. This is all on a developer. So we could still go through and do a, like a light, for lack of a better word, a community impact analysis to see what will be done. And that's just another tool that attracts a developer. So a developer comes in, "Hey, I've got a, I've got a town that really wants me to come in and do something. I've got an idea as to what you may want, and I've got an idea ahead of me of what the other challenges is going to be." So that's where that discussion came from. So I don't really see any reason, I'm not giving an opinion, okay? But I don't see any reason why this should not go forward. Get it, Don? If this is done, then I can actually close out what our task was with Highlands and go back to Highlands, and they get some funding to do that community impact study, which I think they would support, and we move forward. And everything that you want to do, everything you want to do is a permitted use down there, but you still, you...
Wouldn't it cost less for a developer to come in and redevelop one of these already standing historical, architecturally magnificent buildings than try to recreate what's already there?
No, he absolutely can. He can absolutely do that. But why does he want to invest the money when all his neighbors have nobody coming to him? Where's the foot traffic coming to come from? So he needs something to spark this. And I'll tell you right now, I just, I'm living through this with some other towns, too. I went through a redevelopment, Jamie was involved in this, too. We went through a redevelopment study for another town. We did the area needed redevelopment study. We did the redevelopment plan. The developer came along, we refined the redevelopment plan. That redevelopment plan actually had condemnation. This thing doesn't mention condemnation or even go in there. That one did. Didn't have to use it, the market prevailed. We had no action in that town for years. Now, this guy's got a shovel around, they've got three other developers knocking at the door that wanna come in and start working. So they look for that first, that first guy to get to the ground. So, you know, we did this plan with the idea sparking some interest. I think we have some tremendous interest in it. We have to keep the community input going. What you did is absolutely fantastic. I was thrilled when I saw it. Yes, I do watch the videos. I saw what your...
We're sorry.
I saw, I saw what your presentation was, and I actually got my wife. I said, "Look what they're doing here. They're actually talking about this stuff."
The train, the train does bring in a lot of 3,000 people.
The train... And we don't focus, and we don't focus them on anything. You know, and the mayor's actually been looking at that, too, because the train guy's the one selling hamburgers and things. So, but he's only a short time out of the year. Somebody's gotta, if they're selling hot dogs, they gotta sell a hot dog before they go along. So they need, they need the people to come into the town. You even said, "If you sell to demographics, you know, our people aren't gonna put down a shop here." So where do you draw on funding to go and shop? We're the, we're the Lambertville against... No, you know, it's like comparing us to Easton. It's the same, it's the same idea, but, I mean, everything, everything's there. Express times, and while we go, we have the tools, and we've got the opportunity zone ready to go. We've got, and then we have the plan in place, so...
Still correct if I'm wrong, though, with the opportunity zone and with our still-standing plan. We already have Riverfront Redevelopment Plan. The investors, should they have wanted to come in for the opportunity zone, they could have already been here.
Absolutely. No, that's, that was my point. You've had the places 2005.
Right, because we've been hearing, "Oh, we're running out of time, we're running out of time." We're not really running out of time. It's starting to be here.
No, you're not running, you're not running out of time at all. But you're not gonna, you still wanna, you're doing this, looking for a developer. So you gotta have, you gotta have the right bait to bring him in. So he has to be really attractive, so Phillipsburg's gonna pop and be ready to go. He's gonna get, he's gonna get that support from the town.
You feel that by passing this plan is the right bait, even though it reads the same as the last plan?
It's got more, it's got more design concepts in there. They're going to see a town that really wants to do something and move ahead. It's not that spiraling brown BS that I refer to. It just goes up on the shelf and nobody talks to. I think this, this one's more alive and is showing what can be done down there. I don't disagree. I think your suggestion before about doing that, giving them more information as to what the challenges are ahead of them is there. I think that may be supplemental to what this is. But Highlands, we want to see is to close this out and maybe get someone running that way. I'll tell you why. I told you before, so I'm a difficulty-finding traffic engineer. Considering the traffic engineer in the states engage with rich construction right now, one place or another in New Jersey. Almost like a conflict. They have one place between these projects right now.
Can I interrupt you a little bit?
Sure.
You want a developer to come in and build a building?
I want a developer to come in and look at all of Phillipsburg, to look exactly what you're talking about, to, and look at what the big picture is. And that's, that's part of it. He's going to see those storefronts. I mean, it's smart.
Put in a redevelopment plan and an indoor recreational facility. Indoor recreation, no, I'm saying where our, I'm sorry, I just totally interrupted. I'm trying to get you on this. Where our rec programs can practice, something that our rec programs can use, something that our preschools not gonna dominate, but can use, something that the community can use. something that the community can use, that's going to generate revenue.
That might be something for another area town, so. Washington Boroughs, I think that might happen. We just changed the redevelopment plan there to, to look at that exact kind of use because they figure that's gonna come in and that's gonna generate some foot traffic on the street. This is, this is a living document, so we can answer this at any time if that, if I want to. But we have to start, I think we should finish where we are in the two years talking about this.
Mr. Irvin, thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you, it was an education experience. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'll, I'll distribute this list of what the comparative changes are.
Yeah, I have them too.